Good afternoon. I would like to call the Graham County Board of Education. Special call meeting to order, and we do have a forum. Please join me for my remarks. Thank you. Our vision: Every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. Our mission: We empower every student every day. As Ms. Baker Chu lives in the pledge.
Please stand.
................................................ Thank you.
Announcing a change to agenda, are there any changes to our current agenda? If not, it needs to go into motion on second.
... Second.
If a motion applies to second, that the general be present, approved as presented. Next here we have adoption of the agenda that's been done. Now ask that safety or health campuses, operations, Dr. Wimborn will give us this information. Dr. Wimborn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, and those who are in attendance and listening live online or watching this later recorded, thank you. And board members, thank you for accommodating this special called meeting. I know it's not easy to get our schedules lined up. Tonight, or this afternoon I should say, we're going to be providing you with some updates regarding the campus, the condition of the campus here at the Mary Potter Center for Education. I'm also going to be offering some recommendations about what to do in light of this information. And we are also going to be available for whatever questions you may have. I have invited our Director of Maintenance and Environmental Safety, Mr. Mike Carroll, to attend. His assistant, Mr. Jack Blackwell, is also in attendance. So between the two of them, they should be able to provide any technical information that, or answer any questions you may have as we get deeper into this topic. But on Board Docs, you will see there are, I believe, six exhibits. There are four reports that are from an independent laboratory that we contracted to conduct some air quality tests. They are quite technical, and some of them are rather lengthy. But there is also a PowerPoint presentation, and we have tried to summarize the findings in those reports to some degree. And then there's also a floor plan or map of the campus. And you also have a hard copy here at your table so you can refer to when we talk about the different locations, different parts of this campus. Because the campus itself, as you know, is rather large and spread out and encompasses several separate buildings. So I'm going to go ahead and begin the presentation, and I might ask that unless there's some point of clarification, if you can hold most of your questions to the end, as I may cover some of them. But again, if I'm going too fast, or you don't understand something I'm sharing, tell me to slow down and feel free to hit me up with those questions. But otherwise, I'm going to try to just get through this, and then we can have an open conversation. Alrighty. So, thank you, Mr. Connor. I see we're going to start things off basically with a little bit of a walk down memory lane to get us where we are. As you all know, for many years, Graham County Public Schools has been conducting annual air quality tests in all of our campuses. We've been doing this since 2017, and we have been using the same third-party contractor to do these, to collect the samples and analyze the results, and then provide us with recommendations. And they've been, they've been wonderful to work with. We did all of our testing this past year in May, specifically for this campus on May 28th of 2025. And the results indicated that everything was relatively normal here. There were no concerns that were brought to light in that, in those series of tests. The reason we do them in the spring, by the way, or early summer, is because that's after the transition away from heat, and that's the HVAC, the air conditioning is turned on, so we can catch and identify any problems before we head into the humid season of the summer. And that's recommended by the experts about that, that timing. So, you know, we were kind of operating business as usual this summer. As you know, it was quite busy. But near the end of August, well, precisely on August 28th, we received a report from staff member that was concerned about the air quality. And of course, anytime we have a concern that's brought to us, we always, we always look into it. Mr. Carroll, the very next day, I think with Mr. Blackwell, checked on the areas of the school, and they actually, as a precaution, restricted some rooms based on just some suspicions they had. We then immediately contacted the lab. They were able to get in within two weeks and conduct some initial tests in those areas they were concerned about. That was on September 9th. And a phone call a couple of days later indicated, hey, you've got some, what we call, altered indoor fungal ecology. And that is scientific speak for mold. We then asked for them to do a full panel of tests throughout the entire campus, and that occurred last week, I think it was Wednesday, September 17th. And then we received those official results on Mon, is it Monday, the 23rd? I might be getting my days mixed up, but this week. And we have all of those reports, official reports, they're publicly available, and they're, and they are in Board Docs. Our practice has always been to share these reports with anyone who would like to see them, and we do post them on our school websites as well for everyone to see. Before I go on, I'll just share a little bit about mold. I've learned a lot about this topic since it's been a problem in our schools and many other schools and buildings across the country, older buildings. You know, if you, if you Google, if you Google mold, you start to look into it, you become to understand mold isn't just a single thing. There are many different types of mold. Mold's are, mold is, exists in spore form usually, and it can be airborne, and it can also be on surfaces. The threat to your health can vary wildly. Some forms of mold are very, very toxic. Other forms of mold are just mild irritants. But it also depends a lot on the individual. People who have compromised immune systems, or maybe, you know, asthma or respiratory issues, it can, it can be very, very bad for them. It can be, it can cause all kinds of problems. A normal, typical, healthy person, it might not impact you at all. It just depends on the situation, the amount of exposure, et cetera, et cetera. You know, there's just so many different factors that come into all this. So when you talk about the presence of mold, it doesn't mean just one singular definition. However, we take it very seriously whenever we hear about mold, because we know that it's been a huge problem for us in the past, and we want to try to always get ahead of it, identify it, and take care of things. Okay? So that's why we're so responsive, and we act quickly when we hear about their concerns or reports. And I want to thank Mr. Carroll, Mr. Blackwell, for always being on point when it comes to these reports. So, we have the results in hand. Next slide, Mr. Connor. And just to provide a sort of summary of those reports, they took 30 different air samples, airborne samples, and then 16 surface samples throughout the campus. They chose these locations. Some of them were based on where we knew there might be a hotspot. Others were just to kind of explore and see where else, what other areas of the building or the campus might be impacted. Twenty-four of the 30 air samples showed what they call an altered indoor fungal ecology. So again, that's the presence of mold spores. Ten of the 16 surface samples also showed that as well. And the two main areas that were impacted are the 300 wing, and again, you can refer to your map, but that is the two-story building where the ranges or counts of the spores were low, moderate, and high. And the 200 wing, where several of the samples showed low and moderate. And they varied a lot depending on where they were taken, in which classrooms they were taken. I think there were some hallway samples as well, but there was some variation. But those were the two main parts of the campus which drew a lot of concern. The main office area, those samples showed normal indoor fungal ecology. The boardroom showed a normal fungal ecology. And Phoenix Academy, which sort of the 400 wing, also tested normal. However, it was noted that throughout all of the tests, they measured temperature and humidity, and the humidity was quite high in almost all of the areas they checked, above the recommended ranges. Usually 60% and above is considered to be a problem, where you would, it would encourage mold growth. And again, I'm just sort of providing a general synopsis of the reports. If you, you know, I urge people, if they're interested, to go and look at those and read them carefully. There's a lot of detail. Their charts, their explanations, you know, many, many pages to sift through. Next slide. So they also, in addition to providing, you know, the results of the samples, they also give a set of recommendations about what to do. The number-one recommendation is to work with a certified mold remediation contractor. We have learned that this is not something, when you have a problem of this magnitude, this is not something we can do in-house. We're not equipped for it. There's a lot of specialized materials, there's training, there's equipment that's required for this, there's special processes, because if you don't know what you're doing, you can end up just making the problem worse and spread mold spores around everywhere, and you end up cleaning nothing. But there's some bullet points there. Number one is that all of the HVAC systems in these areas have to be thoroughly cleaned. And they talk about HEPA acronym, which is High Efficiency Particulate Air. So it's a very high level of cleaning. You know, the size of the particles that need to be cleaned are tiny, tiny, tiny. So it's not, again, just taking a paper towel and wiping stuff down. It's not just a regular household vacuum. You know, this is much, much more advanced type of cleaning that we're talking about. In addition to cleaning all those systems, they recommend cleaning all surface areas, all surface areas in those impacted zones. Think about a classroom, and some of these classrooms have some furniture. They have materials in them, they have cabinets, they have ceiling tiles, they have, you know, it's the floors, the walls, it's every single surface. Also, in addition, they talk about this notion of making sure that before you do any retesting, they do at least 100 air exchanges filtering with, or doing an air scrub at the HEPA level. So it's 100 times over, you have to clean that air. And the last one, which is even, it's really the big one, is you've got to under, address the underlying, address and eliminate the underlying humidity and moisture issues, because that's the cause. So you can go clean it all up, spend a whole lot of money, a lot of time cleaning it all up, but if you don't do that last bullet, you're right back where you started. And I think we've all, we've learned about that, you know, in our other, other recent experiences with mold. Next slide, Mr. Connor. So again, the root cause, and they talk about these in the reports, it's humidity and moisture. That's what causes mold to grow. That's the fuel, that's the fuel, the food for mold, the way that it, that it grows. And really, there's two, two causes here. One is our HVAC systems, especially in these wings, the 300 wing and the 200 wing. They are outdated. You know, these have, projects have been put off for years, years. They go back to the 70s and 80s, 90s. They are, not only are they old, but they're like two or three generations of technology old, what you call a two-pipe system. So there's no humidity being removed. It's not like the, the heat pump at your, and the air conditioning at your home where you've got cool air, but it's also dehumidified air. In these parts of the campus, we have a fan that blows across cold surfaces that have been chilled by cold water. And so it's, the air is cool, but it's humid. The control systems, the thermostats, all of that, they're inadequate, they're outdated, they're difficult to control and maintain. They're leaking, there's condensation because of the, we haven't removed the humidity. So the pipes sweat, the valves are leaky, you know, you're welcome to go up there and look at them, it's very, very evident. The fan coil units where the cold water flows through in each classroom, they're rusted, they're just way beyond end of life. We've got older chillers on these campuses. Chillers are the big, giant cooling units that cool the water down. We've got problems with outdated pumps, compressors, and there's no makeup air coming into the building. Like, so there's no fresh air coming in that's been conditioned. And again, this is nothing new, we've always known this, but these, these projects have been deferred and deferred and deferred. We're way beyond end of life. In addition, we got a problem with the roof and the building envelope in these areas. We have what are called failed roofs. This is according to our third-party engineers. On the 300 wing and the 200 wing, they are way beyond their end of life, they're out of warranty, we're just putting patches on patches. We've got also a lot of untreated outside air entering the building through the eaves or the overhangs of the roofs, the vents, and we've got, still got some single-pane windows in a lot of these places that have cracks where just hot, humid air is coming in on the summertime, and it's mixing with colder air, and it creates moisture. Next slide. So, we know we've got all these issues, we know what the cause is, and so we've got to think about what are other solutions? What can we do? And so the team has put together really, it comes down to two options, what we, what we're going to call Solution A and Solution B. Solution A focuses on, you know, addressing the problem and fixing it, and further investing in this facility. So I'll just briefly run through this. You got to, first of all, you've got, we've got to get the students out. We've already taken that first step. Graham Academy has shifted temporarily to on remote learning, but you got to get them all, all of these impacted areas, and you got to relocate them. Then we need to remediate, we need to pay a contractor to come in and clean everything. And then we got to replace and repair the HVAC, the roofing and the building envelope, and then we can bring them back. Okay? That's sort of Solution A. Solution B is much simpler. We basically get the students and staff from these impacted areas out, and we permanently relocate them to the Holly Creedmore campus, which as we know, is sitting empty, and that facility is in much better condition than here. We've, there was a lot of reinvestment in that campus within the last 10 years. It has new, relatively new roofs, refurbished HVAC, et cetera. And then ultimately, down the road, this campus could be closed, declared surplus, surplus property, and then there could be a separate conversation about how, how this historic site could be repurposed, maybe, you know, through the county or the city. I, that would be a whole other conversation. So next slide, I'll dive into each of these a little deeper. So Solution A, here's a, here's more detailed summary about what this would mean. We got to remove the students and staff and temporarily relocate them. The Graham Academy students, as I said, they've already been placed on a modified remote plan, and we've begun identifying new office locations for our central office staff. We have employees housed in both of these wings, in addition to the teaching staff and the students. So we have to get them out. That's, that's urgent. We then would need to remediate with, with a professional group, certified mold remediation specialists. And they have to follow the recommendations of the lab, and then they have to retest before people can come back in. But then, if we don't want this to come back right away, the same problem, and it would likely happen in spring when it gets warmer and humid again, we would need to replace the roofs on both of these buildings, replace the HVAC, and then address all the issues with the building envelope. There are also some asbestos concerns, and I don't want to get too much into that, but there's a huge liability of asbestos in this campus. Fortunately, it's, it's fine, it's mostly floor tile, which if you keep it waxed and sealed, is not a health hazard. But if we were to start replacing roofs, we may discover other asbestos in those areas due to when they were built. You have to start peeling the roof off and putting on a new roof, you may discover surprises. Once you do all that, we then return the students and staff back to this campus, these newly renovated areas. Conservatively, that would take 12 to 18 months to complete all of that work. So, you know, when I say temporary, it's, temporary is a long time, even in this scenario. So the next slide talks about the costs for Solution A. We're, and again, these are estimates. I tried to be conservative, but also strike a balance. I didn't want to skew the numbers too much. We did a lot of research. Mike and his team went back, Vicki eyeballed these numbers too, Ms. Heinz did. Moving costs, which could vary, getting all the students and staff out of here, maybe $100,000 to relocate them to another campus, hopefully a little less. There may be some, some cleaning that we would have to do. The initial magnitude of that work is over a quarter of a million dollars just to clean the impacted areas. And then to do all of the necessary repairs is about five and a half million. Again, that's probably very conservative. If we ran into surprises, that could grow quickly. And then we would have to move everyone back, so there's another additional moving cost there. So you can see that number of about $6 million. Again, this is an estimate, but it's based on what I believe is solid information and expenses that we've encountered already recently. All right, let's move on to Solution B, take a look at that. Here's a summary of what that would entail. We would remove the students and staff from the impacted areas and permanently relocate them to the Holly Creedmore campus. Again, that moving cost would be about the same. We may need to clean or replace some materials or supplies or equipment, because, let's say we have curriculum materials or furniture or supplies that are in one of these rooms that's got mold in it. If we take it somewhere else without cleaning it, we're just taking a whole mold colony somewhere else, and we don't want to do that. So it may be cheaper to clean it, or maybe cheaper to throw it away and buy new stuff. Again, not really sure of the extent of that, but there's a figure there. Also, we could probably do, based on the initial, the testing that we have thus far, we could do this move in phases. Phase one, we would do immediately, we would move Graham Academy, all the students and the central office staff in that 300 wing where, where the levels are highest, get them out, get them moved ASAP down to, down to Holly. And then phase two, in the coming weeks, everyone else, all the other remaining central office staff on the 200 wing. Then we could look at Phoenix Academy. Fortunately, the main metal building of Phoenix, those tests were clear, but ultimately, I think it would be more efficient if we had everyone under the same, you know, on the same campus. And we could move them either during winter break, or if we wanted to push it out till summer, that might be a possibility. Then we would have everyone off of this campus, and then the board, if they chose, could declare it as surplus and, and have conversations about what it could be used for in the future. Next slide is a summary of the costs, estimated costs, again. Much cheaper, as you can see, it's cleaning. We would need to do a really deep clean of the Holly property. We left it in really solid condition, but if we're going to move all of our students there, we need to wax and buff the floors again to receive them, make sure everything is spick and span, move, move all the necessary furniture and equipment and things there. And then if there's anything that has to be replaced or professionally cleaned, we would get that done, and it's taken that figure up over $200,000. Now, of course, that's less any potential recurring savings, you know, if we got rid of one of our properties. Next slide, again, is sort of where we land. You know, Solution B, some, some of the pros for this, obviously, it's a single move, it's much less disruptive to the students and staff. It utilizes an entirely vacant campus that we already own. We can do these moves in sort of phases, it's much less expensive, we're going to avoid a tremendous bill, which we, we don't have that money, and if we did, we would want to spend it on schools that are full of children that really, really need it. It could allow the elimination of some future carrying costs for this campus and clear the way for some potential uses, community municipal uses. I mean, this, this is a historic place, and it deserves, you know, to be honored in a, in a very important way. So that would be, that would be a critical conversation to have at some point. But, you know, from just a strict health and safety position, that's, that's my kind of lens right now, and then a financial sort of business case, efficiency for the district, my recommendation would be Solution B. So with that, I'll be quiet and open it up, open up the floor and see if you have any questions. I'll ask maybe Mike Carroll and Jack to come up to the podium and field any questions that I'm, I don't know anything about, and take it from there. So Dr. Lindsey, I will say before I, before I be quiet, this, most of this information is information, but I would very much like the board to, to hold some sort of, have a motion and make, take a vote on some action tonight, especially with, when it comes to the relocation of Graham Academy students, at the very least.
Well, thank you on the onset for such a detailed report of the conditions of our school here and what A and B, what you found to be, I guess, most effective here. Thank you for the time you put into that big report. Board members having questions for Dr. Wimborn, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Blackwell about what we just heard about the status of our system?
I do. Mr. Carroll, do you feel that it is, everything that has accumulated here, HVAC wise and all of that, do you feel, and I'm just asking that, this might have, preventive method could have been taken at an earlier time had things been looked after, like, years back? Because this didn't just happen overnight, obviously.
Right. So naturally, the answer is yes. Preventative measures always presents catastrophes of this sort from happening, not only here but across the district. Unfortunately, and our district budget often dictates where that money's spent from year to year. Not to say that was the case here during that time, but yes, ma'am, it was definitely a deferred maintenance issue that over time is, is starting to catch up with us, as many of you know by attending our operations meetings, and not only the Mary Potter issue, but other issues we've discussed in those committee meetings. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My question, you're going to have to hire a moving company?
Yes, ma'am.
If we go with Solution B, and I was just wondering, do you already have an idea of, we have to take bids on that?
Well, the bidding process may or may not happen due to the cost. simply based on the fact that we just went through a major move this past summer, and we've got estimated costs of $176,000? So that was this past summer's move. So, you know, in this situation, as always, speed and timing affects efficiency. And moving kids and staff out of a situation like this into a vacant building, we will need time to get that building back in shape, you know, like a summer break. Now, of course, we would expedite that as much as possible, but we don't want to rush it to the point where we mistreat those students and staff as well. So I don't think the cost of moving certainly is not going to exceed what it did this summer. So I really don't see that being a big-ticket item in this process. Because the current Holly-Creemore facility still has furniture there. For example, student desks, teacher desks, et cetera. So we would certainly do a tour with Ms. Helder and her staff to see what's needed there before we go through the expense of cleaning anything here and relocating items that are already there. So a lot of that will dictate the cost of this move.
And Ms. Russell, if I may, for a moving contract, or a cleaning contract for that matter, because there's services, they don't have to go through a formal bidding procedure. They can, you know, gather quotes and choose the best one, but formal bidding is not required.
So when would this start, getting the building ready and getting, you know, all that?
Well, based on the decision you guys make, possibly tomorrow. You know, we would want to jump on it as quick as we can, because these students are in an online format right now at home. So we would do our best to get the transition done as seamless as possible and get those students and staff back in the facility.
So Dr. Wimborn talked about phases.
Yes, ma'am.
Moving. And so the students, the teachers, I mean, the affected?
The 300 wing, I'm guessing, would be, the Granville online would be the first phase, is my understanding of that. And then our central office staff, who is located in the, mainly in the 200 wing, would be the next phase, which would be shortly after. I don't want you to misunderstand phases as months apart. I mean, it would all, almost be seamless. Students are in school week one, beginning of week two, staff is flowing in right behind them. Yeah, so it shouldn't be a disruption to their department. As little as possible. I can't guarantee any. You know, we'll do our best.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Waters?
One more time.
Shoot away.
Ms. Hines, what effect would this, say we don't go with Solution B, just hypothetically, what effect would that have on our budget? I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. We do not have $6 million. In our fund balance, we have 4.3 million available.
Excuse me, fund?
Yes, in fund balance. We do not have funds to do this.
Mr. Carroll, if I could hear it correctly, you had, you already walked through in May, May of this year, and the bill was, the mold was not at the level of concern?
Yes, ma'am. The results come back normal.
And then, and always was, it was a point where we had to make this action? Does that mean it's kind of, it grew kind of fast?
Absolutely. It can, it can happen virtually overnight, in a sense. And mold is a tricky thing. I know Dr. Wimborn touched on the subject of different kinds of molds and surface mold, airborne, spores, et cetera. And just to provide a real-life experience example of that, when we received a call on the 28th, we actually come out that evening to do a visual assessment of it and walk the building that, late that evening, recognized one particular room that was, had very visible mold in it. I mean, you could see it on the desktops, on any curriculum items that were in the room. You didn't have to look for it. It was very visible. In a room just down the hallway adjacent to it, you know, two or three classrooms down on the opposite side of the hallway, we found mold on one filing cabinet and underneath one table. So visibly did not look that bad, but based on the reports we received from LRC, it was the worst room, based on spore count. So a lot of times, we can't go off visual methods. It's the reason we, you know, put a lot of faith in LRC to come in and give us accurate air quality testing.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes?
Um, Ms. Hines, just to kind of put this into perspective, could you remind us all what our current total budget for capital projects is for this year?
We received 3.2 million from the county for capital projects. Part of that is equipment, but the large portion of that is for capital projects. So 3.2 million. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
No, I can.
Sorry. So 3.2 million is the funding we received from the county for capital projects. Part of that is for equipment as well, but the vast majority is for capital projects. So again, not 6 million.
And those funds are somewhat already allocated, are they not?
Oh, absolutely. They cover the normal progression of repairs, HVAC, roofing, all of the normal repairs.
So what impact would spending, again, I think I heard 6 million was a conservative estimate, on keeping this campus open have on our ability to fund critical needs at all the rest of our campuses?
Well, first, we cannot, we don't have $6 million to spend. And if we took the vast majority of our capital funds and used all of our fund balance, correct, it would not, we would not be able to fix any of the other campuses that we have. That would, that would take up all the equipment that is required. You know, all of, all of the other HVAC, roofing, facility maintenance that has to happen. So we don't have the funding to do this.
Mr. Carroll, if we, I don't even know if you can answer this. If we invested this money into this campus, would, would this building, would that be it? Would this building then be sustainable for like the next 20 years, or are there other, are there other major concerns?
Yes. No, ma'am. I mean, it wouldn't. So your chiller, as Dr. Wimborn expressed, we have three chillers here. Two of them are 2014 models. One is a 2001 model, which is already at the end of its 20-year life expectancy. You can do the math on the other two, that it's over halfway there. So that's another million dollars right there in chiller replacement alone. The boiler here, I believe, is an 80-ish model, sometime in the 80s, maybe 86, 87 model. So that's another significant repair down the road as well. Not to mention, you know, paving issues, you know, we just repaired a sinkhole out here, you know, just a few months ago. And, you know, something of that nature could happen again. Painting is a norm from year to year, your normal plumbing issues that occur, and just your average maintenance breakdown. I mean, just this week alone, to give you a perspective, you know, what our weekly maintenance budget looks like, just this week alone at this facility, we replaced a motor that provides hot water to this side of the building. It was $2,000 just for the motor. So it just, it kind of puts in perspective exactly the money spent on regular routine maintenance, not necessarily longevity, just what's going to get us by sometimes.
Other question from Ms. Hines. Ms. Hines, so the move, if we chose Solution B, the move is going to cost about $220,000?
Over $200,000?
The move is part of that money. Yes, ma'am. And again, that's an estimate.
Okay.
You'll go back to that slide, Mr. Connor. Yeah, so it's 20 for cleaning, prepping, Holly, 100 for moving, and then 100 for maybe cleaning or replacement of material supplies or furniture that we might need. Again, these are, these are rough numbers.
What, okay. So if we chose Solution B, I mean, something has to be done. So if we chose Solution B, do we have money to cover Solution B, or?
That's something that, that would normally come from fund balance. So we do have the fund balance to cover that. That's something that I would try to work into the regular budget, but we could use fund balance for that.
Ms. Hines, can you recall when we had that problem mold about five or six years ago on our schools here? Did the county lend us that money, because we didn't have the money?
That's correct. I believe that was '17, if I remember correctly. And yes, that was a, because it was two schools at the same time. And yes, the county did provide the funding for that.
One question. So we're talking about a couple of wings now. But, you know, if we repair those couple of wings, then we have the rest of the building to worry about, correct?
Correct. So, you know, Phoenix, the metal building up the hill, the results come back normal there. But HVAC there, which we did not include in any of these estimates, because it wasn't the affected area, the unit that serves that building is 1976, still running, but it's a very old unit. And I would, if I may, and I'm not trying to make the number get larger and larger. I'm just trying to put out a real perspective here of what we're facing. If we were to come in and do mold remediation, if you really dig into Mr. Richmond's from LRC's recommendation, as we go into these classrooms, anything that has a built-in wood cabinet, he requests that we remove that, because you can wipe the mold, but you're not going to clean it. You're not going to necessarily get rid of it. The potential's still there for it to come back. So in the construction world, when you start removing things, you often break into other areas. For example, asbestos. You know, as Dr. Wimborn mentioned, it's waxed right now. So as long as it's not broken or moved or disturbed, we can leave it. But in the event of a construction world, when that happens, then we would have to start taking care of asbestos too, which is a very large amount in this facility. In fact, this is the largest facility in the district as far as asbestos is concerned. So if you, right now, and my number may be a tad off, but I'm pretty close on it. If you were to abate all the asbestos at one time and just floor tile alone in this building, you're at $780,000. It's pretty much every piece of floor you see in the 300 wing, 200 wing, and parts of Phoenix in one area in this particular building. So it's a large amount.
To make this almost personal, I must say that, as Granville County native, being the tenant, Mary Potter School, I know that people in this community have a soft spot because decisions we have to make. But we must make the decision based on evidence.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm standing here too with a soft spot. I mean, I attended this school. I was last eighth grade class here in '88.
So three people here.
Brought students back, so I'm with them.
Right, exactly. So, so we know that the community will have a soft spot. But we, as Granville County, board members, administrative leaders here, we must do what we can actually afford for our district here. We tried to consolidate schools this past year, trying to save money. Right now, the number's still down based on enrollment here. And to fix a problem that may reoccur six months later here, it's just not really feasible. And that we know that Mary Potter High School, Middle School, has been a great place for our kids to learn and grow at here. But we must make our decision based on evidence. And right now, we don't have money to put the money where it belongs in the school here. We'll have a school about 20 miles away that we can put our kids in. You know, it doesn't matter where they learn, the goal is still the same as graduation, and become enrolled in lists or to your four-year school here. We must make that decision based on evidence. As painful as it may be for us, but we must make the decision based on evidence. Any more questions from the board members?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, so if we choose Plan B, and this is a Mr. Carroll question. And the furniture and the things that there, that are there that are affected, they have to be removed, right?
You're speaking of here?
Yeah, the, yeah, the effect that furniture and surfaces.
So just my vision, initial vision, this is, without meeting or any planning at this point, would be to assess, really deeply assess Creemore Facility, the old Holly Facility, see what's available there, and if it's suitable, then not worry about the cleaning of materials here. The focus now should be moving, getting those students back in a classroom.
So, but it's going to be a cost still with the affected building. I mean, something has to be done, right? I mean, you can't just leave, just shut the building up and leave it. Is that what happens?
Typically, yes, ma'am.
Did the question answer, Ms. Russell?
Yeah, very.
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions or concerns, comments about Plan A, Plan B? I think Dr. Wimborn wants to father agents.
Madam Chair, if I may just add two points additional that weren't in the presentation. As you know, we rent the kitchen out to Strongarm Bakery, you know, part of, in the spirit of partnering with the community. I spoke with the owner, Julia Blain, and we did not take any air samples in that area. She is concerned and has expressed an interest that if we do move to Holly, they would like to be considered to also be allowed to move down there as well. In addition, I, let me see, what was it? Oh, my goodness, I'm in a blank on the other item. Oh, the gym is slated to be a polling location for November election. And the director of elections, Ms. Burnett, reached out to me because she had heard that the campus was closing. And so she was alarmed about what to do about the polling location for the gym. I'll plant on talking with Mr. Carroll. We might need to consult with the lab. But at this point, I don't believe we would have to restrict access to the gym. There is no air conditioning in that gym. It has two huge exhaust vents that can pull in lots of fresh air. We did not sample that room, did we?
Not this previous round. We did in May, and the results were fine.
The results were fine. So at this point, I don't know that there is a, an urgent reason to restrict access to the gym for poll, for it to be a polling place. Just as, there's no problem with us being in this room right here today, because the results were normal.
Correct.
Which raises another question about the boardroom, which also was not included in this conversation.
So the ARP is not like the chiller, you know, the AC?
It's a separate.
A separate unit?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
This section is full of, so indeed you've been about this, you, your bank or something.
You'll notice, however, though, that you can walk from the 300 hall all the way down here without having to open or close a single door. And mold spores travel through here. So, I mean, at some point, we would need to close it.
Close this part of the building as well?
Yes, ma'am. I would think so.
Ms. Stuperson? Are, so I know, I know what we've had to do in the past legally to make decisions about closures and consolidations. How does this situation differ, or are there any legal obligations that we need to be aware of?
You mean as far as, then what happens to the property?
Or moving students or moving a school? Yeah.
So moving Granville Academy would not require you to go through school closure, right? You would have to change its address in various places, as we've been through recently with your other, you know, various government databases. We would have to change the school address. But as long as you are ending with the same number of schools you're starting with, which you would be, you don't have to go through a school closure process. Because you're starting with a Granville Academy, and you're ending with a Granville Academy, and it will have the same school number.
Thank you.
If I can say one thing. It hurts that this has happened to this historical facility. But I do understand that dollars talk. And I guess I just want to say that I do hope that the school system as a whole will, I hope this is a lesson that we need to be more proactive when it comes to our facilities. Because this, yeah, this is, this is a tough one. But thank you, Mr. Carroll and Mr. Black. Am I correct?
Blackwell.
Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for what you've shared today.
You know, I think what happened, guys, you probably remember, Mike, years ago when this building was not air-conditioned. And I think they were trying to help make sure that instead of closing the school on those hot days, it was air. It was real loud in those classrooms here. But I guess they did not maintain those. But I guess they did not maintain those big units, it was like a truck coming. And I guess from time to time, this kind of wore, wore down, and not being prepared, and the dampness and the heat and cold that nature here was something that they just did not do on, I guess, a yearly basis, six months, what the case may be. But I guess it did, but spirits would be cool here around, but now, it's costing us because they do not maintain on, on working.
Mr. Carroll, how, how long have you been our maintenance director?
Uh, this will be my third year.
I wanna thank you for the way that you continue to try to prioritize our miniscule budget to save the campuses that we still have.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I feel like this has been, like, this behemoth that we, we all inherited, because nobody sitting around this table were the same people that were making decisions four years ago, or six years ago. And, I mean, it, it makes me angry, because we all inherited, like, this giant mess. And, and now it's all falling on our laps, and, and we, you know, it's a horrible honor of, of having to do these kinds of things, and it is, it's really sad. And, um, but, but I wanna thank you and your team.
Yes, ma'am.
For all their hard work. Because I know you guys pulled nights and weekends, and, you know, when pipes burst at South Granville, or, you know, like, a roof leaks, or the power goes out at 7:00 AM, you know, like, you guys are on it everywhere. So thank you for that.
And I think this board, four or five years ago, they were, they were putting their trust in the maintenance people, letting us know what was going on, responding to that. So I think your expertise and your keenness have made us, like Danielle said, aware of what's going on in our schools here, and I so thank you as well for your hard work, and your 20 hours, 30 hours, trying to make sure things grow. Any more questions or concerns about this plan here, solution A, DC, what we should do? If not, I think we need to decide what we'll do tonight. I think Dr. Winborn's team might have a decision tonight about what we want to do about considering Mary Potter being closed, or trying to pay out. Well, we hear that the money's not there, so closure and, and declare a surplus, or what's your pleasure? Make somebody to ask more questions, or put a motion on the floor?
I move that we adopt solution B, which is to close the Mary Potter Campus and move the affected students and staff to the Holly Creemore area. Is that what we're asking? Okay. Well, that's my motion. Second?
If the motion passed the second, then we take solution number B, to close down Mary Potter Campus here, and declare the surplus, and move our students across to this Creemore Holly Campus.
If I may clarify the motion, I think declaring it surplus will happen separately. But, so that, this motion, as I understood it, would be to, to move all operations out of this building, but any decision about what then happens to this building is for a future meeting.
What should I restate again?
I mean, I think you've stated it.
Well, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, board members. And again, a huge thank you, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Blackwell, definitely much appreciated, all your work. Board members, we will, we will move forward, and again, this will be a phased approach, but as Mr. Carroll stated, I anticipate that we will, we won't, we won't waste any time, okay? We will, we shall not tally. We will roll. And we will provide you updates at every step of the way moving forward.
I'd like to thank you too, for spearheading this and bringing us all this information, and doing such a good job. Once it was brought to your attention to try to prioritize our students and do what was needed. So I just wanna thank you for that.
Thank you, so. Uh, if I have more questions or concerns, see, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
A second. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, then I can come in.